Welcome to London City Council Meeting. This time I would like everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have our roll call. Mr. Eads?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Hitt?
Here.
Mr. Stahl?
President.
And we're missing Mr. Hayes. We hope that everything is working out well for him. And has everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes from our, from the November 2nd meeting? Any corrections or changes, additions to those minutes? All right, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Or the same sign. This evening, we do have a public hearing, so I'd like a motion to enter our public hearing.
Show move.
The second. All right, we have a first and second to enter our public hearing. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, we have entered our public hearing. Motion to read by title or number.
Show move.
Second.
All right, first and second. Ordinance 21423, sponsored by Henry Comer, an ordinance amending official zoning map, parcel 3102617.005, 3102687000, 3102685000, parcel 3102258.000, parcel 3102617 and .006, rezoning to multifamily planned unit development. And I understand we have several representatives here this evening, and we'll go ahead and hear from them. And if you, you could actually use that microphone, and that'll help us on our recording. It's all being recorded here, so, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Council President, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. I don't know if we can pull this up or not.
Is it stage? No, not that stage. And we'll see you guys in a minute, because this is gonna come down, and you can't make it go back up.
Can't stop.
Let's see here.
Over on the left, where it says, "Stage." On the right, on the right.
Oh, there it goes.
On the right.
Right or left?
Right, my left, your right.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I am, my name's Gary Smith. I'm the owner of G2 Planning and Design. This is actually the first time I've had an opportunity to be in front of you folks. Some of the prior meetings, I couldn't make, but I am the chief planner for the project. I also have a number of other members of the development team, and representative of the applicant Coglin Development here with me. So I've got Dan Magley, who's my associate in my firm, Mike Reeves with Kim Lee Horn, he's the engineer, and could talk about engineering issues and traffic. We've got the owner's representative, Scott McLean Talk. I think everybody's relatively familiar with the project at this point, but I just, for the benefit of the audience, I just want to kind of run through real quick what is we intend to do, some of the things that we've done since prior council has kind of weighed in on this. So, the project itself is right along Kenny Boulevard, where Kenny Boulevard meets US-42. So US-42 is a relatively major commercial corridor for the city, and the project is kind of in behind kind of that commercial location. This is a little bit better, more in-depth view. What you can see is the commercial corridor along 42, and then you have a mix of residential development, mixed with a single-family and multifamily in back of that commercial corridor. And so what we're really doing here is kind of creating a transition as we move some of that multifamily into commercial. The intent of the project and the development is really to create kind of a mixed residential community, offering both for-sale and for-rent product. And so what we've really tried to do is create an extension of the existing multifamily that's right here. This is also owned by Coglin Development. And this will be extended into the site and then connect up to the commercial area, and then we're creating a for-rent townhome subarea right here. What's that? For-sale, I'm sorry. For-sale, yeah. So for-sale in the townhome area, and then for-rent in the multifamily, and then a small component of commercial right on the backside of the commercial area. Now, that commercial is really intended to be more used for uses that will primarily service the multifamily and the townhomes there. It's not going to be a destination commercial, which is going to pull a lot of people in. Primarily, it's gonna, we would anticipate that being something smaller, like a coffee shop, that's really going to cater to a lot of the people in the apartment complex, people that can walk, those kind of things. So that's what the intent ultimately of that commercial is. And so, taking a look at the site plan, you can kind of see how this is ultimately laid out. We have the townhomes here, we have the multifamily here. So the multifamily is a mix of two-story and three-story. What we've done is we've pulled the three-story away from kind of the existing single-family, and so the three-story is really all located kind of in this area. And then the two-story, what we've done here is to create a little bit of additional separation as we've kind of brought all of our garages along the property line, and then the two-story buildings in behind, and then some additional landscaping. And so, what we've done from a buffering standpoint, to make sure that we're sensitive to the existing neighbors, is we've provided a landscape buffer in excess of what the city code requires. So we want that to be, you know, nice and well landscaped, and we want to be good neighbors. In addition, there are sidewalks throughout the project that will ultimately connect up all of the multifamily areas to Kenny Boulevard and the street network as it, you know, as it winds through there. Oops, sorry about that. Sometimes this can be a little touchy. This is just kind of an example of the amount of open space that we have in the project in various forms. So we have some community open space, some central open space, some setback areas, some preserve areas, some stormwater areas, all kind of mixed together to create kind of a network of open spaces throughout the community. Then, just an example of the landscape plan, again, you know, illustrating some of the buffering that we have along the existing single-family. Everywhere else, we're already bordered by existing multifamily, so we will have some landscaping there, it just won't be quite as intense as the landscaping that we're using to buffer between us and the existing single-family. Just examples of the sign, the sign locations, some of the details, so you can see kind of an example of the signage that we would envision for the project itself, the light fixture, and so on. And then these are examples of the architectural style of the development. And so, you can get a sense for what the garden apartments look like, the residential, the 16-unit buildings, really making an attempt to kind of break down the scale into smaller sections, so that the building, you know, feels smaller from an architectural standpoint. Same thing with the three-story buildings, trying to break those down into individual And then, some of the townhome buildings, the townhome elevations, and then we have really more of a 3D perspective of what those buildings are going to look like. And I think this, this probably paints a little bit better picture of aesthetically, you know, what you can expect on the site. Another 3D perspective of the site, and then a 3D perspective of the townhomes. And then we've got some engineering stuff. I put it in the back, because I didn't think that that was a part of my presentation, but in case Mike needs it, you know, he'll be able to use it to refer to it. Couple of other things that I did want to note before we really, because I'm sure there's people that may want to speak on this, and I'm sure that the council may still have some questions, so that's what we're really here for, to answer questions. We have done and completed a traffic study at this point, and a couple of things, I know there were some concerns about, you know, potential future growth in traffic being included in the traffic study. So what we did was, we actually increased the factor of growth that we would normally have to account for when you analyze background traffic and historical growth in traffic. We increased that growth factor substantially, so that we could study a potential future growth as well. The traffic study still came back, and basically noted that really no improvements were required. Kenny Boulevard is already a pretty substantial street, three lanes, so it's got a center-turn lane left in, you know, a bunch of different directions. If it were just a two-lane road, we probably would have to have some turn lanes installed to accommodate that, but given the fact that it is a three-lane road, there's no additional improvements that are required to that. And 42 is already, already substantial. In fact, I think what the study's shown, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that 42 is actually currently overbuilt. We don't necessarily agree with that. We know that there's growth coming. So we, we looked at kind of the way that we think it's going to be, and ultimately projected out, and, you know, still, I think we're in fairly good shape as far as improvements are concerned. The, all the stormwater, you know, we've gone through that, made sure that we're accommodating all the stormwater needs of the site, pulling in stormwater wherever it's coming in, make sure we detain that. The stormwater will all meet the city's regulations for stormwater detention, it will meet all of the water quality requirements as well. So, aside from that, I think those are some of the questions that really kind of came up the last time we were here. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and again, if I can't answer it, I'm sure one of the other team members can.
Thank you for your presentation. We have any questions here from council?
Well, the questions that did came up, that did come, pardon me, did come up before were the traffic studies, and you guys did that without being asked to do that, I believe, just because it was a concern here at council, that you went ahead and paid for that traffic study, and then went back, it sounds like, with additional concerns, because we thought that maybe it wasn't considering future growth. And that's what you're saying that you've done, so I appreciate that.
Any further questions? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on behalf of the project, or? Any other questions? All right. Thank you, and, you know, I've expressed my gratitude for, you know, wanting to add more housing to the city of London. I'm really excited to see how many people are currently becoming interested in our city. I've lived here now for 20 years or so, and I've seen there's a lot of growth, and I think it's a really nice city, and it has a lot of potential for growth, especially with our position according, with Columbus and freeway on both sides. You have 71, you have 70, it's just, I think that this is just the hub, and I think there's more to come. I think this is the ground of what we're about to see. So, I think that, you know, a lot of the people that are getting into it now are really, you know, they're getting into it at a good time, because later, I think it may be a little harder to get into, because all the growth is going to become even more popular place for people to build and for people to live, so.
I don't think there's any question about that.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Awesome.
Very forward-thinking. Do you want me to leave this up for further discussion?
You can leave that up.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you. All right. If there are no more questions, we'll exit our public hearing.
Is there anybody else that wants to talk?
Any other questions? But, no. Any other questions? All right, at this time, we will, yeah, motion to exit our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to exit our public hearing and enter, enter back into our regular meeting.
Second.
All right, and the second. We'll take a roll call for that. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
All right, we have exited our public hearing. One to our communication and announcements, we do not have any this evening. Audience concerns, and I'm not sure if there are any additional back there, but do you have, we'll begin with Mike Norman. Okay. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes.
Michael W. Norman. 188 South Oak Street, here in the great London, Ohio. So about a year ago, the BPU came to you guys and had this $18 million project set forth, and we approved it, and it's a good thing. The question I have is, in that $18 million project, was about $2 million set aside because of our East High Plant not being able to produce water. During the recent finance meeting, the BPU representative showed up, had some water, and said, "We fixed it." I kind of would like to know how we fixed it, because we haven't used, as far as I know, there's been no money approved, because it was like 2.2 million, I think it was, that was assigned to the East High Street Water Plant. I'd just like to know how we went from not having the solution to having the solution, but it's not the one that was presented during that meeting a year ago, the coronation, filtration, and all that?
Yeah, that's, that's what was presented.
Right, and it, but obviously, we haven't put any money towards building that, at least I'm not aware of any. So, I'd just like to know that if there's someone from the BPU that can explain the process that we are using to get us to where we are now, and if we're not using what we said we're going to use in October, what are we using, and has that always been there to be able to be used?
Okay. Rex, do you want to address that question, or would you prefer Mr. Lealonic?
Well, I'll, I'll take a stab at it if you want. This is basically a test phase to test the premise of all the things that they want to do in a small scale. Am I right in saying this? I mean, we're not in full production mode. There's going to be devices, tanks, systems needs to be put in place to go large-scale, to do full production, to produce the, what'd I say, 350, 200, 500 million gallons?
Yeah, right.
So.
500,000?
500,000, yeah, not million. We'd be in good shape if it was million, 500,000. So, all it is, is a small test phase to put it through the system to see if we can produce good quality water, and that's what they've done on a small scale.
So basically, the plant, so basically, the plan that Burges and, is it Niels? Is that, is that the?
Burges and Niels, the engineering, yes.
I was saying there. So basically, it's, we, we've created a small version of what they said they were going to do on a large scale to produce just enough water to give us a sample.
Am I saying that right?
Or there's a?
You already did, go ahead.
Come up here.
I'm going to ask Russ Thompson to help with the, Russ is with Middle Ohio, they are supervising our water treatment facility. I'm just clarifying, like then, that the money towards the improvement for that East High Water Treatment Plant, 1.6 million, that was for new well development, which we are still approaching, okay, and full steam ahead here. The other remaining components were for design upgrade for the plant. We brought along Mr. Thompson and Ms. Middle Ohio, they had some different ideas, new ideas, to get the plant running, and I'll let Russ go ahead and explain exactly what went transpired.
Russ, before you start, can you tell us, you know, what your background is, where you've worked before?
Yeah, so I'm Russell Thompson, I've been in the water wastewater field for about 16 years now. I've worked for Siemens Water Technologies, US Filter, worked for the city of Westerville, and then I spent close to nine years at Aqua. We manage water and wastewater treatment facilities. So, with my background, I'm familiar with Wigan Technologies, that's what we have over there at that plant. That's an ion exchange water treatment plant, so everybody knows it's different than what we're used to with lime treatment over at the West Plant. My basic pilot was to come in when Bill recommended we come in, Bill Long, and look at the plant. So I came in and started processes up. The plant's been offline for quite a while, so we had a lot of SCADA issues, valve link issues, to where the plant wouldn't run in auto. I got the plant, started up in manual, first thing I wanted to do was shock the system, because I know, I don't know how long it's sat with water in it. I got with previous engineers who did a pilot on the plant. I asked them what their chlorine dose was when they ran their pilot. They couldn't tell me the dose, so I asked them the total amount of chlorine used to shock the system. The highest number I got was 10 gallons, to test for residual at the head of the plant. So from that point, I said, "Okay, let's start at the wells and work our way into the plant and see," because, yes, there is ammonia in the wells, but it's not anything that's untreatable, you know. When I got with the engineers to see what they had tested ammonia-wise, I think the highest result was like 3.1. So, me coming in after the plant being off for so long, I thought, "Well, the ammonia's got to be about a 10," you know, and that's something that's going to be very hard to treat. So I got the plant started up, we ran a four-day pilot on the plant. It took me 150 gallons of chlorine just to bleach and shock the wells, 8-inch line to 36-inch line that comes into the pre-filters. After that, it took me another 50 gallons of bleach to shock the pre-filters and the softeners. I let those sit for about 24 hours. After that, we started it up, flushed the chlorine out, all this, all the backwash water and everything at the plant right now goes back to the wastewater plant. So, after I did that, I was able to get everything out of the system, started up in manual, I ran about 130 gallons a minute, we did a four-day pilot, and I was able to dial it in, that our chlorine dose needed to be 30 milligrams per liter. And then even, you know, we went from there, okay, a 30-milligrams-per-liter dose at that flow, that puts us about $150 a day chlorine use at that plant, so it's manageable, you know. I got with Bridget from the EPA, I asked her, "Is there anything that states pre-chlorine dose has to be under a certain milligrams per liter?" There is none. Some people worry about disinfection byproducts, so I talked to them about that, and put their, you know, minds rest about that. We are going to test for TTHMs and disinfection byproducts. I would be concerned if we were pumping that much chlorine on the back end of the system, but we're not. So, all this chlorine is going to the pre-filters, we're shocking, we're killing the ammonia like it's designed to do. From there, it goes to the pre-filters. My residual chlorine through the filters is about 1.0 milligrams per liter free, so our post-chlorine is going to be a very, very, very small dose, so probably 2-milligrams per liter. Right now, again, we're still in the testing phase, this is me running the plant without the tower back pressure. This ion exchange plant doesn't have a clear well, so what comes through the filters goes to the towers. So we had Wigan in this past week, we had our SCADA guy getting the inner leaks for the valves fixed, and running the plant and trying to see how the plant's going to run. Right now, it's kind of hard, because there's no head on the plant. So, we have to fix some SCADA issues that was originally designed with Wigan and the first contractor that set the plan up. We got a lot of those issues worked out, where at least right now, we got a letter out to the EPA that we want to start the plant up, and we want EPA approval to be able to start the plant. And then, once I get that plant running, you know, I had a lot of people say, what I've seen in my experience in the past is ammonia in wells, just like iron and manganese, if the well isn't run, it will build to a certain point. Normally, once you get that well running for three to six months, you'll see those numbers come down. It's not going to come down a lot, maybe .5 or .7. So now, we take that 3.1 to, you know, 2.1 or 2.2 ammonia. So at that point, we'll be looking forward to being able to cut the chlorine dose back to hopefully maybe 20-milligrams per liter, save on money and, you know, go from there. But, as of now, that's kind of where we're at, we're waiting on the EPA to get back with us. I'm going to have to have them in there, start the plant up, show them that we can produce water. They're probably going to want me to run another pilot, to where we can sample for TTHMs and all that, that's, you know, that's just part of the process. But, as of now, I think with that plant, it was such a high-tech plant at the time, if you don't have the background or experience to run a plant like that, I don't care what class of operator you are, you're Class 4 and spent 40 years at a lime, you will not know how to run that plant. You will not understand the processes of that plant. So the original problem that I've come to find out, to me, is there's a chlorine generation system onsite, so at that plant, they were producing their own chlorine. My findings are that when they first started up this process and they filled that chlorine tank, there's no data on what percentage bleach was going into that tank. So my guess is, they started it up, maybe it was 12.5%, but who knows if it sat there for four months before they started up and Wigan came in and did the final startup. So, out of the gate, we were sending low percentage chlorine to the wells, and I guess that's kind of what kicked everything off. They couldn't get chlorine residual to the front of the filters, both pumps were turned up to 100, so there's a lot of stuff to do with the chlorine that actually was done wrong. So, going forward, that system's just, it's, it's too hard to manage. It takes a lot of maintenance, it's a lot of money to manage, and we're not that big of a plant to where we need to make our own chlorine. So, most likely, we'll have bonded come in, that way we know for sure we're getting 12.5% bleach, we're not going to have to worry about if it's, you know, falling off and all that. The plan is designed to have shutdown procedures and backups, so if we do lose chlorine feed, the plant will shut itself down. So that was one of my biggest things, I have to show the EPA, prove to the EPA, is that if our chlorine were to fail, the plant has to shut down. Another thing that we're going to possibly be setting in place is, on the effluent of that plant, there's also chlorine monitoring. We're getting, probably have a sensor phone put in, so an alarm dialer, so that plant will be, any alarm like that that were to happen, we'd be notified immediately. So, I mean, the plant was, it was a really well-designed plant, built well, it was top of the line. I mean, you couldn't be more proud of a plant like that, but when you have a plant like that, it takes a certain person to be able to operate it, you know. And, like I said, I think the engineers, when they came in, they just trusted that the process worked, and that's kind of where we got ourselves, so. But other than that, yeah, it's a, it's a really nice plant, and I think it's something London should be proud of, and we're going to try to get it up and running and get you guys going, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions, or? Did I answer everything? Was that too long-winded?
I think you covered everything.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time to do that, thank you.
Well, no, I'm going to ask a question, because it sounds like, thank you, Mr. Norman, that was a great lead, I'm, I'm happy you're here. What was your name again, sir?
Russell Thompson.
Russell Thompson, thank you, Russell. So it sounds like the water source isn't nearly as bad as what we considered. We were so worried that the water source had too much ammonia, but it sounds like it's treatable with the right plant and the right person running the plant.
Correct, yes. From my past experience, I've run plants where ammonia's 2.8. And like I said, a lot of times, you'll see ammonia spikes in wells that we haven't run in a long time. That's why alternating your wells is very important, so the new plant, we'll probably alternate the wells every two weeks, so we'll switch the two wells on and off, that'll be part of our operation process. And like I said, I was, you know, I didn't know the ammonia results, so once I was told the ammonia results, the whole time, I'm thinking, "Okay, it's got to be 10-milligrams per liter," something that, so once they told me the results are 3.1, that's something that we can treat. That's, that's not something that's unheard of, so.
Thank you very much.
So definitely, this is an instance where knowledge is what we need. We need to make sure we have the correct people in place that have the knowledge behind them in order to operate the things that we need to have, have working for us.
That's why operators and engineers don't get along sometimes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, one, two, I think it says Raymond Anthony? All right. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Raymond Anthony, reside at 521 Eaton. First thing I'd like to, since Mr. Hayes is not here, hopefully, one of the other city council members can answer my question. Resolution 221-23. Resolution two-twenty-one dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a new contract for a vehicle exhaust removal system. The fire department received a grant to install a vehicle exhaust removal system. Is this gonna be paid for by a grant or by any city money?
I believe Mr. Castle probably answered that. I thought it was mostly a grant. Was there a matching fund?
It's not a hundred percent grant, but I believe it's ninety-five percent will be paid through by the grant. The other five percent will be...
So any money not paid by the grant will be coming out of the city general fund?
No, it'll come out of the fire fund.
Out of what?
Out of the fire department's fund.
Okay. Mr. Eads, this is for you. Resolution two-twenty dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for a new salt barn. The city needs to replace the current salt barn. Will that be paid for by grant or by city money?
I believe that would be city money.
And would that be out of the general operating fund?
I believe we would have to appropriate the money from our general operating funds to pay for that.
Okay.
It'll come out of capital, but ultimately, it comes out of, generally usually transferred in capital, but yes, here.
And that needs replaced because...
The old one collapsed.
Totally collapsed, exactly.
And it was, the insurance company didn't cover it.
Okay, I'd like to follow up on a couple of things that was in the messenger, January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. After each one of these, all I'd like, just to save time, is I'll give you guys three answers, or three, three options, not started, started, or completed. First one is, and these are all under, right now, the proposed sewer project.
And to remind you, sir, you have five minutes.
I know. That's why I'm giving you three options to choose from.
Well, you've, you've almost exhausted your whole five minutes already.
I'm sorry. East Side Trunk Sewer, sewer, has that been, not started, started, or completed?
East Side Trunk Sewer, that has come to council. We have approved, does that be started? Mr. Lalanick?
It's started, the engineering is complete.
And the engineering is complete, according to Mr. Lalanick and the Board of Public Utilities.
And he is the Board of Public Utilities representative.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Citywide inflow and infiltration repairs. Flooding is an issue in many parts of the city. BPU proposes the city pay for a comprehensive sewer system and study to pinpoint issues, then make the repairs and upgrade to fix them. Projects would focus on manhole upgrades, new linings, and other repairs. The total estimated cost, nine-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, including eighty thousand dollars for the study. Not started, started, or completed?
Not started.
Not started.
Thank you.
Now, is that a matter of, that money would need to be appropriated once we get into that project? Because I know we did appropriate, we, you know, have lots of, we have, what, fourteen million dollars coming, but a lot of those projects were not set to actually start yet. So I think you may be including lots of projects that are coming down the pipeline.
Yes, Mr. President, that's slated for two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. So that's slated for two thousand and twenty-four, so it would not be started yet, because it's not slated to start yet.
Okay. The miscellaneous sewer projects. This is relining or replacing the line on South Walnut Street due to cracking, relining or replacing the line on East Lincoln Street and Riley Avenue due to root intrusion, relining or replacing the line next to School Street behind City Hall due to root intrusion, access issues in a deteriorated manhole, and making repairs to the line in the alley off of South Main Street. Estimated cost, seventy-nine thousand, three fifty. Not started, started, or completed?
One on Second Street is completed, one on the east corner is completed, one on South Walnut is completed, one here at school is an engineer.
Was there one after School Street, or was that it?
Uh, no, there was South Walnut, Riley, East Lincoln, and School.
Okay.
Riley is an engineer also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next goes over into proposed water. Updates to the West Water Treatment Plant. The city's main treatment plant needs a new tank for water softening.
Well, sir, you, you've exhausted your time, and I think some of these questions that you have may be coming up later in some of our legislation, and they may be able to answer them at that time. Thank you.
Well, these are pretty important things that need to be addressed.
Right, and that's why they're in our legislation to come up later. Now, with the water plant, you're asking for that, and you have...
But my questions are never gonna be asked of how they're not started, started, or completed. I'm just trying to figure out at what stage they're in, that's all.
Okay. And, and we will get to your questions. We will get to your questions, however, you have five minutes, and you've used about ten.
I didn't know you had five minutes by a policy.
Yeah, you did. Thank you. All right, on to our committee reports. We'll begin with Mr. Eads.
Mr. Eads attended the Personnel Finance Committee along with others. We have many items that are coming forth, the biggest items of concern that night were the fire department, how we're going to fund that. We will discuss that here in a little bit, I believe. And also, the first presentation about Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District was made that night A lot of items are gonna come forth tonight. I don't, I'm not gonna read through the whole list, but we'll see them as they come up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peters?
Uh, I attended the Personnel Finance Committee as well, and ditto what Greg said. It'll be discussed in legislation tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robinson?
I have nothing.
All right. Mr. Hitt?
Yeah, I attended the Public Safety Committee meeting, and we talked about some legislation that's coming forward at the next council meeting. One of those is related to floodwater management, and others related to disinfection processes for the West Water Plant, and the other is appointment of a representative for the Solid Waste District Committee. And then I'll read through the report that the fire chief submitted during that meeting. As far as EMS training, they did pediatric sick and not sick for Madison Health. As far as fire training, they, they focused on pump operations. They completed the CPR event at the London Public Library. They had several touch-a-truck fire safety talks at London Elementary and St. Pat's. They participated in several trunk or treats. They had several station tours. They provided EMS for playoff, for playoff games, and they assisted in the candy sales set up at the Masonic Temple. And that's it. Mr. Stahl's gonna do the police chief.
Please, okay. Mr. Stahl?
I also attended the Personnel and Finance Committee, and as I said, we'll have more later. And I also attended the Public Safety Meeting on Tuesday. I have the police report. They're continuing the application process for three open positions, the interviews and backgrounds currently being conducted. They will be picking up the Tahoe Cruiser ordered in twenty-two from La Lally Chevrolet on Thursday, and should have it in service next week. They're waiting on parts to uplift the two Dodge Drangos ordered last month. They will be seeking to replace our K-9 unit with the new dog next year due to the legalization of marijuana in Ohio, and the age of the K-9 prohibits retraining to not alert for marijuana. Igor will still be used for particular drug searches and apprehensions in the public's relations until a new dog is obtained and certified. It is not expected this will be completed until the summer of twenty-four. The K-9 Cruiser will be replaced as it is due for rotation next year, as well as over one-hundred thousand miles and being seven years old. They participated in the following events, the Halloween Patrol for Beggars Night, several trunk or treats, and the second grade reading at London Elementary School. A notable incident in a significant development from a murder investigation of Jamie Crim that occurred in London on April twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. On Friday, November third, twenty-twenty-three, Nylund Horner appeared in Madison County Court of Common Pleas and entered a plea of aggravated murder. He was subscr- said quintly, sentenced to life in prison with the possibility of parole after twenty years. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have anything from city officials? Rex, Ken, okay. Thank you. All right, on to our old business for fourth reading, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure move.
Second.
All right. So we have a first and a second. Ordinance two-one-four-twenty-three, sponsored by Henry Comer, and ordinance amending official zoning map, partials thirty-one zero-two-six-one-seven-point-zero-zero-five, thirty-one zero-two-six-eight-seven-point-zero-zero-zero, thirty-one zero-two-six-eight-five-point-zero-zero partial, thirty-one-point-zero-two-two-five-eight-point-zero-zero-zero partial, and thirty-one zero-two-six-one-seven-point-zero-zero-six re-zoning to multifamily planned unit development. And we had our public hearing this evening, and it sounds like the engineering and the development have gone above and beyond what we've asked for, because I know that's gonna be really important with current residents in the single-family homes, and they're like, oh, we're gonna have some construction, we're gonna have noise, and, you know, lots of new people, but they've gone above and beyond to create those natural buffers, so it's not like concrete walls or anything, but it's, I would imagine it's gonna be really nice landscaping to buffer between those already existing single-family homes to make it really a nice, comfortable transition for all of the nice, wonderful neighbors that we're gonna have in the city of London. Do we have any other questions on this legislation? All right. And our, what are our wishes here?
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
And a second for adoption. We'll take a roll call. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hitt?
I'd have to abstain.
Oh, yeah, because you live around there.
Right.
And Mr. Stahl?
An enthusiastic yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So two-one-four-point-twenty-three has been approved. Thank you for your time. On to our new business, resolution two-two-two-point-twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure move.
The second?
All right, first and second. Resolution two-two-two-dot-twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes, a resolution increasing appropriations. And Rich Hayes is not here, and who can speak to this? I can say to you.
This did come up at finance, so you'll let me address that?
Okay, and then...
And I see Officer Combs is here.
Yeah.
Do you, do you mind stepping up here, Officer Combs? I appreciate that, thank you. You're an unexpected visitor, but I'm glad you're here.
Hey, please.
Pardon me?
So, hey, please.
Oh, thank you. So this, it was brought up, and Councilman Stahl brought it up a few minutes ago, because of the change of the laws, making marijuana a legal substance for adults in Ohio, that the dog Igor would no longer be the correct dog to use for that because he's trained to hit on that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we would need to purchase a new dog that can be trained at a different level so that it doesn't hit on that.
Correct. So the training process is, we just alleviate marijuana from the training process, and it's more placed out as a distraction, like anything else would be like a trash can, or, you know, cigarettes, or anything like that. It's placed out at that point as a distraction for the dog, so he knows that it's not a narcotic he's sniffing for.
So if we buy, the dog, it was stated the dog would cost about twelve thousand dollars for the dog. You may or may not know that, I don't know. But that was the expected cost that came up at council the other day, would be about twelve thousand dollars. However, there was also the need to buy a cruiser. Our cruiser's about aged out, according to what we were told the other day, so the, this is saying that the, to appropriate eighty-five thousand dollars to the police capital fund so that we can purchase a dog and a cruiser. Now, I did ask, the other reason why I've got you up here, I did ask Chief Nickel if he could supply a report to us about how often the dog's used.
Sure.
And you did supply that, and it was texted to me. I don't know that you still have access to that today. No? Okay. Well, if you give me a minute, because everybody's computers were down, he could not send that to me today. But let me read this, and I'll let you address that, okay?
Okay.
From Officer Mike Combs to the chief today, this was for the last year, I believe, or the twenty-twenty-three, right? Current year. You had twenty-five call-outs to Springfield for narcotic calls and sniffs. That includes drug unit in Dayton Marshals, the Dayton Marshals Office.
Correct.
Two call-outs to Springfield for area searches and article searches. Twenty-five uses with Madison County sheriffs within or just outside city limits.
Correct.
Twenty-four stops for HIDTA or the DEA.
HID, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Two sniffs for Madison Correctional, forty-seven drug searches for London Police, thirty-eight of those were positive indications with contraband recovered.
Correct.
Four demos for school functions, two school sniffs for narcotics, three positive indications and contraband were recovered.
Correct.
Two building searches, three apprehensions for violent subjects. So this is a little confusing to me, I'll have you...
Sure, yeah.
So three apprehensions of violent subjects, one bite apprehension, comma, one knock-down apprehension, and one no-bite apprehension. The first part, I believe, is three apprehensions of violent subjects of which one bite occurred.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that was confusing to me. So the dog did grab hold and...
The subject was barricaded, he was barricaded himself in, we were able to force the door, and Igor made the apprehension on him.
And we, and we have three of those apprehensions, is that what you're...
One, no, just one bite apprehension, that, that was actually...
Okay, so there was three apprehensions?
Yeah, three apprehensions, correct.
One bite, one knock-down, and one no-bite.
The knock-down came soon after he, Igor broke his tooth on the first subject, so there was no biting on that because he couldn't at that time because of the pain.
Okay.
So it was, it was, it was a knock-down. He was able to catch up to him, knock him down to the ground for us to be able to get up to him to, to make the arrest.
Thank you, I appreciate, and what else can you tell us? You're here, be your advocate.
I mean, he's, he's, I mean, I think there's a lot, well, there's a lot of people in here that know Igor. I mean, he's a, he's, I think he's become a staple to the community. I mean, everybody likes him. You know, I try, I try to do my best with outreach, you know, going to schools, whether it be St. Pat's or London Elementary, or, you know, some of the other schools. Madison Plains reaches out to me sometimes now to come out and speak to their class. Mr. Comer, he's, you know, we would go to his daycare during the summertime when he has a lot of his kids that are there for the day. You know, with, with uses with the community outreach, on top of being able to use him for all the other, you know, narcotics, stuff like that, that a typical officer, we wouldn't be able to search his car if it wasn't for him and retrieve a lot of the illegal narcotics that are still running through our streets currently. You know, if it wasn't for his nose and the law that allowed his nose for us to be able to search these cars, there, there'd still be a lot of narcotics out on the streets right now. When it comes to the apprehension portion of it, it's a, you know, it's, what I'm trying to say here, you see a K-9 Cruiser pull up, a lot of suspects that usually run from us, they don't. You know, I, I, there's three that I know off the top of my head this year that usually run from us, but because I was the first one on scene and I had the dog, they're like, you know, their, their first thing to me, well, I'm not running from you, I'm not getting bit by the dog, you know, so it's, it's a, what's the word I'm trying to think of?
Deterrent.
Yeah, it's a deterrent for the, for the, some of the citizens that usually fight us or run from us, or, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of other things that's not notated in reports that it, that we utilize him for as well. You know, sometimes with building searches, you know, we make our call-outs like we do for anything else, and usually when you say, you know, police, you know, Police Department K-9 Unit, you know, talk to me now, or I'm gonna send a dog in, you're gonna get bit, right? There's, I don't know anybody in this world that wants to get bit by a dog, so the first thing that happens is, okay, I give up. You know, it's, it's one of those deterrents that now, we're not having to send officers in to risk themselves over something. Just a simple call-out with a dog made them give up and, and come out to us. So, I mean, there's, there's lots of other things that, you know, it, he helps with when it comes to certain, certain things in our, in our department.
So just, just a comment, I did a ride-along earlier in the year, and I questioned, and I'm glad you're here, you can address, I questioned... I questioned how much usage we got out of a dog.
Sure.
Um, and the officer I rode with explained it was probably more because of the collaboration with other departments. I mean, that's a big thing, that there's, this is the only dog in the county, I think, at this point.
Correct, yeah.
So the collaboration with West Jeff and, and, uh, Sheriff's Department, Plain City and, and, and everyone else that did was...
And OSB.
It was a tool, so...
Correct. And, and that's, and that's what he is. He's, he, he is a tool. I mean, he's an extension from my belt. I mean, that's, he, he is considered for us a locating tool. That's, that's what he is to us. I mean, he can locate from anybody's, you know, somebody drops their keys in the park and they can't find them, I can take them out there and we can find those keys. You know, it, it, it becomes a, a tool more than what, more than just for criminal apprehensions or drug narcotics. I mean, there's, there's lots of things that he can do that the department, I'm trying to push, that he can do that is part of his job. And like I said, it's as simple as somebody maybe losing their keys at the park, Cowling Park or Merrimack or, and he's, he's able to recover. I mean, he can, he can, his nose is that good that he can recover somebody else's keys that's been laying in the middle of grass for a day, too. So...
Well, thank you for answering my questions.
Absolutely.
And giving that report. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And then the question I would have is, uh, the new dog, would you have the new dog?
That's the plan. That's the plan.
Okay.
In hopes, yes.
All right. Good. Any further questions? All right. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm going to interrupt for a minute. I don't know that you've seen the message from the clerk, but I don't think you switched us back to a live feed.
Uh, there, the, it only has one feed. Let's see here.
Well, we've, we're on that at some point where we're not. She just wanted to know if we had the live feed on or not.
Let's take a look here. Now, would this be to switch from the... Rex, is this to switch from the, uh, from the other screen to the, back to the normal screen or... I don't know if it's a matter of pressing, uh...
Is it still showing that it's streaming?
Yeah, it's showing that it's streaming. And it shows the, uh, room projector. Do we need to turn the room projector off or...
All right, we had that when the gentleman was here, right?
Because if you touch this, you're going to stop the recording.
I really hate technology. Mr. Norman, I think this is your fault.
Now, this is, this is on right here, and this one's on. Okay, back on that. But, uh, it's just recording.
This is what's supposed to be going, this camera.
Yep. And is the recording?
It's one of the...
It is, okay. All right, so the system is recording, so I'm not sure what is happening with, uh, the livestream, but it's recording. And there's also a backup, a thumb drive that we have here that's recording as well.
Okay.
So if it's not showing, we can show it because we have this and backup as well. But it shows, uh, on here that is recording and streaming. So I'm not sure what has happened there. All right, so two twenty-two, uh, twenty-three, any further discussion there? Okay, one, two, uh, resolution two twenty-three twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure moved.
What's that?
Two twenty-four, twenty-three.
It's two twenty-three, thirty-three. We didn't, you haven't done that one yet.
We just got done with two twenty-two.
Oh, Rich, yep, you're right.
So we had a motion, and then we have a second to read by title or number, all right? So a first and second for, uh, resolution two twenty-three twenty-three, uh, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So the Rec- Recreation Director has told us that, uh, there's filters that need to be replaced. Uh, there was some money that was left, um, so they just want to, this is authorizing them to make an appropriation increase. And then there's also one for a decrease, um, that's coming up next, I believe. But this is to put this in capital so they can use that for the filters, uh, so that they're put in place before the pool opens next year.
Okay. Do we have any, uh, questions on two twenty-three twenty-three? All right, what are our wishes here? I leave that on or get the filters for next year?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Okay.
The second.
First and second to suspend, uh, so first and second, okay? Take a roll call. Mr. Eads?
Um, yes, for this.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes. Who's your dog?
All right, so adoption and second. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay. All right, one, two, resolution, yes.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I noticed that you didn't re- didn't consider two twenty-two twenty-three. I think it was stated at finance, the urgency to try to get this stuff on order because everybody, every law enforcement agency in the state of Ohio is going to be getting new dogs. If we get behind date, well, we won't get one. And then also the issues with getting cars is really hard to do. And the chief was kind of wanting to get this started, so...
Okay.
I didn't know if you can go back and reconsider that.
That's what I asked you guys, is there anything else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't...
So, so what, what do, uh, yeah, because we can reconsider, we're still in the same meeting, we can reconsider up to next meeting. So what are our wishes here? Do you want to reconsider, uh, two twenty-two twenty-three? I would need a motion.
Um, make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
To reconsider first.
Uh, reconsider.
I'll second it.
Okay, to reconsider?
Yeah.
So reconsider and then a second to reconsider. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, our wishes?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Okay.
Second.
First and second for suspension. Uh, Mr. Eads?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Thank you for that reconsideration, and I know that that is true, this is, because didn't we have some cars on order before? It just takes forever even to get it. It's, it's so long, so...
Especially what he's wanting to get to K-9 Unit, he's wanting to get a bigger one. He's wanting to get a bigger vehicle with me as a, uh... Excuse me?
Right, right.
And what, if you don't mind using the microphone, yeah, because...
So the reasoning for the bigger vehicle is because the Explorer that I have now, I don't have the ability to transport anybody. And that's kind of what I want with the next vehicle is to be able to, because anytime I make a stop and I make an arrest on somebody, I have nowhere to put them.
Hmm.
Um, so with the bigger vehicle, I'm looking at, uh, three-quarter cage for the dog with a transport seat. So I'm, I'm able to transport and not tie up another unit because of what I, what I've created.
Okay.
Is what the reasoning is at.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right, now on to, uh, resolution two twenty-four.
We have two.
Oh, that's right.
I'll make a motion to adopt, two twenty-two twenty-three.
Second.
All right, so motion to adopt and a second. Roll call for adoption. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
All right, after?
Yes.
Yes.
Two twenty-two twenty-three has been adopted. Now on to resolution two twenty-four twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure moved.
Second.
All right, first and second. Uh, resolution two twenty-four twenty-three sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution decreasing appropriations.
So this was a little out of order with this. I mean, the money wasn't all used when they did the sandblasting project. We just wanted to, uh, reuse that for the filter, so this is decreasing that? The auditor's shaking her head because I'm a little confused with this now. I forgot that we discussed this to decrease that. Um, so decreasing that because the money wasn't used for that project, but we're applying it to the project we just approved a minute ago at two twenty-three.
Okay, so decrease appropriations. So what are our wishes here?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
First and second for suspension. Uh, Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
All right, move to adopt and a second. All right, Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to resolution two twenty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure moved.
Second.
First and second. Uh, resolution two twenty-five twenty-three sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, this is going to go with, uh, resolution, um, two twenty-eight twenty-three when we get down to it. But, um, this would be a transfer agreement between the city of London and Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District. Um, requires an escrow of five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this one would be for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming out of our operating water fund. So it'd be half of the amount out of this fund.
Oh, half, okay.
For, yeah, out of this fund.
And we have questions on two twenty-five twenty-three?
Well, I would like you to explain here at the public meeting why this has to happen. Yeah. Mr. Alonick would...
Well, I was going, so I guess we'll get down to that when we get to two twenty-eight twenty-three. But this will be, um, when we talk about the joining, possibly joining the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District. Then we'll have Steve speak on that.
Okay, so it will be covered in later legislation as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, do we want to leave this on or, okay, so leave this on until, okay, all right? Are there any further questions on two twenty-five twenty-three? All right, we will leave that on. One, two, resolution two twenty-six twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure moved.
Second.
All right, first and second. Uh, resolution two twenty-six twenty-three, uh, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, this will go along with, uh, two twenty-five as well as two twenty-eight. Um, this is the other half of the five hundred thousand. This would be the two hundred and fifty thousand coming out of the operating sewer fund.
All right, and we want to leave this on as well because...
Yes.
Is along with this, okay? Any questions on two twenty-six twenty-three? All right, one, two, resolution two twenty-seven twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure moved.
Second.
All right, first and second. Uh, resolution two twenty-seven twenty-three sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution authorizing the advertisement for bids for personal property no longer needed for city purposes.
Uh, this is just authorize, uh, Safety Service Director to advertise sealed bids to sell the two hundred and five, or two thousand and five international plow dump truck, um, that we no longer need.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on two twenty-seven twenty-three?
And we no longer need it because we've received new trucks. Is that correct, Bill?
Good.
One or two? We will be receiving one or two? Two, very soon. Hopefully before you have to plow.
Yeah. All right, what are our wishes here for two twenty-seven twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Okay, first and second, uh, we'll take roll call for suspension. Uh, Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Uh, take roll call for adoption. Mr. Eads?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Two twenty-seven twenty-three has been adopted. One, two, resolution two twenty-eight twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
Sure moved.
Second.
All right. First and second. Uh, resolution two twenty-eight twenty-three sponsored by Josh Peters, an ordinance authorizing the approval and execution of the transfer agreement between the city of London and the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District.
I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Steve Alonick to, uh, entertain us all on this.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I have a, a brief presentation, uh, to go through. But before, before I start, I'd like to just recognize some of those in the audience, um, with us tonight. Uh, Mr. Rob Slane, uh, Madison County Administrator is with us. Mr. Brad Lutz, who is, uh, on the board of Mid-Ohio. Uh, you've already met Mr. Thompson, uh, and Daniel, uh, who also works for, uh, Mid-Ohio. We have Brian Saunders, who is a foreman with our water department, uh, here. Carol Benedict, who is manager of the VPU office. Uh, they're all here in support of, uh, this happening this evening, uh, or the next, uh, three readings. And, uh, I'm, I'm going to call one or more up to give, um, a statement or testimony, okay? And I, I promise I won't, I won't drag this on, but it's, it's a, a pretty critical piece of legislation. So, uh, we, we've got all the time that you'll need over the next month and a half to, to come to a logical decision. So, uh, a little bit of history. The last four years, um, the jurisdictions and governments in Madison County have been meeting, um, uh, discussing, uh, utilities. Discussing how we could all work together, uh, maybe to take advantage of the economies of scale and, and help each other, uh, with our own, um, uh, problems, uh, administering and running utilities. Because it's, it's a tremendous, tremendous, um, feat, if you will. And, and in my opinion, municipalities don't have any business running utilities. It's, uh, it, it, it's a business of its own, but, uh, we'll, we'll get to that later. So, uh, Mr. Castle, Mayor Kloster, myself, along with county administrator, uh, administrators, uh, Mr. Slane, uh, the village of West Jefferson, Plain City, Mount Sterling. And we, you know, we've all sat around the table trying to figure out, okay, how, how this happened. So, uh, we, we met routinely, we talked to other districts that had formed, sounded very, very intriguing and compelling. Uh, then COVID years happened, the meeting slowed down a little bit. Uh, and then they came back gangbusters, uh, at the end of last year, beginning of this year. Um, Plain City, uh, had a severe problem, uh, they needed assistance with their utilities. Uh, so Mr. Slane and the county and the commissioners all put their heads together and decided, hey, we've talked about this long enough, it's, it's time to form. So, uh, the, uh, formation of, of Mid-Ohio, um, Water and Sewer District was formed in partnership with, uh, Madison County and, uh, Plain City. In London, uh, the Board of Public Utilities sat back, we watched, kept, uh, an eye out for, um, what was happening. We, we, we wondered how we could be part of maybe of being a service provider. Uh, Plain City, uh, had to figure out a way to send their wastewater elsewhere because they were infringing on the, the Darby Creek watershed. And so for many, many months, we were contemplating, hey, can, can London be a service provider? Can we help ourselves? You know, we have a dynamite wastewater treatment facility, you know, maybe we can be part of this. In June of two thousand and twenty-three, um, Madison County purchased the buyer's property, which, uh, is on the north side of London. I, I'm sure most everybody is, is aware of where that's located at. Uh, and it was quickly realized that, uh, that was slated to be a site for a regional wastewater treatment facility. treatment facility, okay? London already has a wastewater facility on the south side of town. Uh, for the most part, we do what we can to keep the, the aromas, uh, you know, restricted, but, uh, any of you who've driven past there or not even ours, you know, drive, uh, on, uh, seventy-one South out of Grove City and you'll smell Jackson Pike, you know, all the way to Worthington. It, 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 it's not something that anybody would wish on a community to have two facilities, uh, you know, within three miles of each other. And so, um, you know, we, we, we actively campaigned with the Madison County Commissioners. That was a tough time with Mr. Slane and myself and Mr. Lutz. That, that was something that the BPU, I know Council Administration did not want that to happen. Especially if there is any, any chance of wanting to enact and grow the City of London up forty-two. So after several months and a lot of protests, uh, it was decided, okay, that we, we'll, we'll seek another opportunity to get rid of the, the refuse that needs to come down from Plain City. And so, um, in September, uh, the county paid a very handsome amount of money for a engineering study to be done to determine, okay, can London double the size of its wastewater treatment facility? Can we double that and can we be a service provider for the county? Or Mid-Ohio? It seemed to us to be, well, it's a win-win, we, we will not, um, e- accept a new wastewater treatment facility at the buyer's property and then we'll have fee revenue from, you know, servicing. Well, guess what? Um, we received the, the, um, Jacob Study, uh, Jacob is the engineering firm. And, and by the way, thank you for, to the county, the county has been our biggest, biggest advocate. Uh, and I'll let Mr. Slane, uh, talk in, in a minute here, but, uh, th- this was fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars, okay, that the county paid just to make sure that we, everybody's doing what they feel is right and, and we know we're, 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 we're turning over every stone, okay? And so what the study ultimately revealed is in order to double the size of London's wastewater treatment facility, two hundred million dollars. Two hundred million dollars, I, I know that it, it floored all of us, but that's just the cost of what it would be. Now, some of that is because that facility was, was poorly designed and it's, it's located right outside of a flood zone and it, it's going to need millions of dollars of attention within the next decade, I just keep that in the back of your mind, okay? So two hundred million dollars to erect a new regional wastewater treatment facility, a hundred million dollars, okay? And so, end of discussion, they shared this with the BPU and Administration the last week of October. We got together and thought, well, okay, what do we do now? So Mid-Ohio presented us the agreement that you see in front of you. After many, many, many hours of discussions since receiving that, we thought, hey, you know, this, this is, this is something we need to seriously, seriously consider. I'm going to transition now to the state of London and its utilities. I have told you all publicly and privately, uh, the system that we have in place with three part-time Board of Public Utility Directors, uh, it is archaic. It might have worked twenty, thirty, fifty years ago, it does not work today. It, the system is broken. We, we cannot prepare for what we have in front of us now versus, you know, what is, what is coming, we, we can't, we absolutely can't. And I'm here to tell you that I spend an inordinate amount of time working for the City of London and, and I can hardly keep up. I can't keep up. I've told you, we need to either figure something else out or you need to hire a full-time Utilities Director and Administration Office because one person can't do this. We are missing grants, we're missing the opportunity to apply for, for, uh, dollars to get our name in the hat. We're missing talks with engineers, we're missing, you know, meeting with other, other, uh, communities figuring out how they do it, okay? So, how do other, um, communities do it? Well, as I said in finance and this was emailed to everybody, here's a list of the regionalized companies in the state of Ohio. There's ninety-four, ninety-four. And they manage utilities for thousands and thousands of communities. And those of you who have looked at the zip codes here, you know, Cincinnati, Cleveland, Columbus, I mean, just, you know, every community that's listed on here, you, 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 you know the community, okay? And so, okay, well, if it's good enough for all those thousands of cities and municipalities in the state of Ohio, they, they're doing something right. And they are doing something right. Being a partner with a region or Mid-Ohio in this case is one of the most intelligent things that we can do. It will help us keep up with the absolute infrastructure repair, replacement, keep up with growth, keep up with, with employees. You know, we, we've had a tremendous amount of trouble finding qualified employees. And I hate to say it, but I don't know anybody in high school who's talking to their buddies who say, hey, I want to work at the wastewater treatment plant when I grow up, okay? I, it, it's an admirable job and I have all the respect in the world for everybody and Russ and Daniel, uh, it, but it, it is not a sexy job, okay? And so we're having trouble recruiting people. So Mid-Ohio has, it pays better salaries, they have access to employees that we don't have access to. The, 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 the cause, uh, in effect that we're looking at now is, okay, we, we got a broken system, we, we can't sustain the system any, any longer. What we need to do, what you need to do is figure out, okay, what's the best approach, what's the best, the best next step? And I think that we've got a golden opportunity here, but let me tell you one thing. And if this doesn't seal this deal, at least to, um, get it to the final vote here, your, your role, your job is to, um, be as responsible as you can with city dollars, with city assets and the charges that our consumers and our residents have to pay. And I know that's a very sensitive subject because last fall and earlier this year, I was in front of you with an eighteen million dollar package that in, had, uh, rates increasing. I, it, it, it was an odd issue, we had no choice, okay, absolutely no choice. However, Mid-Ohio, because of the economies of scale, will save our end users' dollars, everybody has seen this, okay? And I've got a ten-year pro forma that, that, um, I'm going to hand out to everybody, there's a lot of data in here, but it's the pro forma for the whole Mid-Ohio. But for London, the year that we, we switch over, there's an average of, um, eleven dollars a month on up to fifteen dollars a month in year ten, okay? That's, that, that's, uh, eleven hundred dollars over a ten-year period, okay? So, uh, how can they do that? They can do that with the economies of scale, okay? They can do that with shared resources. So I'm going to invite, uh, Mr. Slane up here, he wants to say a couple of words. Mr. Lutz, if you want to say a couple of words or any employees who, um, want to say a couple of words before we get into the agreement.
Mr. Alonick, can we roll back for just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Just because if people are watching and they're not picking up on this, when you're saying ten dollars, it's not, ten dollars is what we're going to charge, that's the savings
That's the savings.
that you're projecting is ten dollars a month per account based on four thousand gallons usage?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Good evening, Council. Just had eye surgery, so I'm going to put on these high-tech glasses because my dad's a little angry at me, so. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to back the clock up a little bit. I think Steve did an excellent job in, uh, explaining the situation. But I just want to take the opportunity, um, to let everyone know how the county got to where we're at now. Seven years ago, when I accepted this position as County Administrator, I had a staff of two people, two sanitary sewer and water employees. Sanitary Sewer and Water was one of my departments that I over, that I oversaw. We began to add facilities, add infrastructure, expand our service areas, so our staff grew. Mount Sterling had some challenges. They said, would you guys mind coming in and helping us address our challenges? That evolved into a contract services agreement. Essentially, the county would come in and run Mount Sterling's plant. Not long after that, Plain City, essentially the same thing happened. They had challenges, they said, hey, can you guys come in, run our plant? We said, absolutely. We hired additional staff so we could maintain, maintain all of these different facilities. Everybody became cross-trained. We were up to Russ, I don't, or Daniel, maybe seven, eight people at that point in time. But the point was, if, if I lost a person, I had a small reduction in workforce compared to Mount Sterling prior to, who had three people on staff, if they lost someone, they lost thirty-three percent of their workforce. So we, we were running those plants, everything was working out well. To the point, we said, we are working as a region as is. So let's start to explore a sixty-one nineteen sanitary sewer and water district. Um, and as Steve mentioned, um, Plain City had some challenges with the Darby. So they were kind of first in line, along with the county, to really get this thing rolling, right? Smaller wheels turn faster. Uh, so we went to Common Police Court, filed paperwork for sixty-one nineteen, it was granted. Plain City basically, uh, transferred all of their assets, employees, cash, assets and debt over to Mid-Ohio. Madison County quickly followed suit. So, what Mid-Ohio actually is, is the county's old sanitary sewer and water department. So these guys, Daniel and Russ and Tom Taylor, they all used to work for me. So I can stand here and, and testify to their abilities and their knowledge and what they're doing now. And I think you can see with them coming in, working on your water treatment plant, the knowledge that you're gaining. So as Steve said, we are, the county is in full support of London joining the district. We would expect that there's a potential for Mount, Mount Sterling to join the district at some point in time and maybe down the road, West Jefferson at some point in time. The district can grow outside of its, the county boundaries, uh, has access to capital that cities and counties do not have. So I could go on and talk about the benefits of the sixty-one nineteen and put everybody to sleep. But I can honestly say that the pros definitely outweigh the cons. So again, the county has transferred over the employees, the assets, the equipment, heavy equipment trucks, cash and debt. So that's where we were at, I am out of the sanitary sewer and water business and I couldn't be happier because I got other things that I need to attend to. So with that said, I'm, I'm trying to keep it short, but from the county's perspective, we would like to see the City of London, um, join Mid-Ohio. And I'm happy to answer anyone's questions.
Well, I know, I just want to, uh, thank you for coming out and bringing the presentation, explaining these things, uh, to us. I know we've received contracts, we've received a lot of the data here, we have copies of this, but we have received this previously. Uh, and I do see that there's a savings here and there's a, you know, in this negotiation, there seems to be a win-win for everyone. The City of London loses the debt that we have and, uh, the facilities and our infrastructure and everything that needs work that we know, uh, when we approved that, what, fourteen million dollars or? We approved
Eighteen, wait.
Well, it's, it's an eighteen million dollar band-aid because it didn't even hardly address the things that need fixed now, those were new things. So I think that with the City of London, uh, dealing with our own, uh, public utilities, I think we were in over our heads with something that we can't even keep control of, especially with all the new growth coming in on top of all of the old failing infrastructure. I don't think there is any way that we could, uh, move forward and keep up with the things that needed to be done. Uh, I think that, uh, you also made a good point, if we go, uh, into the Mid-Ohio, that's going to free us up for other, to, to, uh, redirect the city's energies to other areas where we can be more effective. Because I, I really feel that, uh, no matter how aggressively we attack our infrastructure issues and everything, I don't think we would ever be able to be successful in, uh, seeing those, uh, handled in the manner that they need to with our current, uh, path of growth. And even with the people we currently have, uh, living in our city, so, uh, you know, I, I think it's a really, I, I, you know, I like the information that we've received and to me, it looks like a win-win, especially, you know, with the, losing the debt and everything like that as well. And we would gain, uh, lots of employees, lots of knowledge. They have years and years of experience behind these, uh, the group that, uh, would facilitate all of the engineering and everything that would need to be done, it's, it's, uh, definitely an improvement from what we currently have in our system. And then we did have lots of projects, uh, listed and I just wanted to go back to the gentleman here. Did you have a couple more projects you wanted to ask about with the, with the water? Mr., uh, Anthony, yes, Raymond Anthony?
I do, but I ran out of time.
Well, but I'm giving you time now if you want to go over some of the projects as we're talking about it, okay? Yes?
Mr. President, can I ask just to wait for a moment here? I'd like Mr. Lutz to speak and then, uh, Mr. Slane, this must be done all in one address.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll allow that, yeah, thank you.
And Mr. Lutz is the, uh, the county's appointee to the Mid-Ohio.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak and, uh, address, uh, the gentleman up here today. I, uh, just want to let you know, and obviously I'm really just, uh, adding on to what they've already said, obviously the Mid-Ohio Board is new. We as board members are new, but the staff is not, the employees are not. And we've been exceptionally, uh, fortunate to bring on people like Russ, who you heard speak tonight, Mr. Taylor and obviously your staff have helped, uh, as well. And that's an important part for us as a board to respect, that we're managing something that is much older than us. And we want to, uh, be respectful to those, uh, customers and to those employees. And we have made it a, uh, what I would call our number one goal as part of this process. Steve even went over, you know, some of the discussions that it had about placement of, uh, you know, the wastewater treatment facility, where that went. And once again, we, uh, we listened to the people, we listened to what was being said and recognized that there need to be a different direction. And that's what I can promise you as a board, uh, not just me, but our board members. I, hopefully at some point in the future, might even be able to come to one of our board meetings and see, to see how we operate. We have an excellent board, I give all the credit in the world to, uh, the county and, uh, the Village of Plain City in terms of bringing people on this board that I think are excellent assets. And, uh, I thought I knew a little bit about water and sewer and then we brought on these people and I'm like, wow, this is, this is a really good board. But there's one more thing I want to emphasize, I, I've been lucky enough to live and work in, uh, almost all the ranked counties, uh, except for Licking County. I grew up in Fairfield County, I was County Administrator in Pickaway County. Helped manage the water sewer, the sewer district down in Delaware County before going over to Marysville as the current Finance Director and Deputy City Manager. And I can tell you that even though Marysville in particular is the city's water sewer system, for those of you that don't know, we, uh, absorbed the county's water sewer system into Marysville and service water and sewer all the way down one, uh, all the way down to one sixty-one, down the industrial parkway and in some areas on the airside of thirty-three. And I can tell you, uh, that compared to Fairfield County and Pickaway County, you don't have, um, what I would call robust regional water sewer districts. If you look at Delaware County, Delaware County has a countywide sewer system. And I would argue that what Marysville has, even though it's operated through the city, is effectively a regional water sewer district. And the advantages that we have, uh, in terms of economic development, residential development, and being able to be a one-stop shop for no matter what it is that's looking at your county or municipality, is, is a huge advantage. And the other thing that excited me, being part of this board, is, and you all mentioned it before, regards to the development that you just approved earlier tonight with the rezoning, that you support reasonable, uh, growth, responsible growth. And that's what this board also supports, and it makes me very excited to be part of this organization, ultimately, uh, be part of representing the U.S. partnership. Thank you very much for your consideration on this reading, and I look forward to answering any questions as we move through the process.
Thank you.
I just have three more, uh, things to, uh, have the city council answer. Uh, this is all due to water. Uh, one is the upgrades to the West Water Treatment Plant. The city mains treatment plant needs a new tank for water softening. It's, it's existing tank, which is twenty, twenty years old, failed last summer and took weeks to fix. BPU proposes rehabbing the existing tank and installing a second tank. The redundancy would prevent a gap in services should one of the tanks fail. The estimated cost is seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. The board also wants to replace the plant's water filters. Filters typically last fifteen years. The plant's filters were last replaced in two thousand and five. Estimated cost is a, is a hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred. Has this project been not started, started, or completed?
Okay.
Mr. Laylon.
So we, we brought, uh, Mid-Ohio on, Russ and his team, to be acting superintendents over our water department. And upon thorough investigation and review, uh, it was on the advice of Mr. Thompson to hold off on the contact solids tank because we had some serious problems at the West Treatment Plant that we had to address first. And so we're in the process of addressing those and getting that prepared to, and, and I don't want to get too technical, but we, it's, it, we're using a gas now. We need to switch to some sort of a, a, a different medium, okay? So we, we put those projects on hold. We feel very satisfied that with our progress at the East High Plant and, and the operations of the West High Plant, uh, that Russ and his team got a good hold on that. And so th- those projects are on hold. They, we, we're not considering those as an emergency right at the moment.
The second one is the North Main Street Water Line Replacement. BPU is proposing replacing thirty-seven hundred feet of the line between Garfield Avenue and the Madison Bowling Lane. The estimated cost is one point two seven million. Has that been started, not started?
You'll see, uh, shovels in the ground in about thirty days, okay? Engineering's done, everything's been done. The, the bid has been awarded. We just need to get financing approved, and then the project will start.
And my last one was kind of addressed earlier by Mr. Norman, is the East Water Treatment Plant. Um, I'm not going to go into everything that it says here, because it sounds like some of it's already been done. My question is, and the gentleman brought this up. Apparently, it takes a skilled person to run effing when this East Water Treatment Plant gets built. The way he was talking is the city of London would have to hire somebody to run this plant because it's so technical. Is this true?
We've already hired them. We've hired Mid-Ohio. Let me just go back to that, that East Water Treatment Plant. And is that your last question, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so that East Water Plant has been a, a scourge on the city of London, on this administration, on you, council, and on us, the BPU. We, we spent countless, countless conversations, emails, and time with the Ohio EPA, the federal EPA, and nobody had a resolution for that problem. Nobody, okay? When we hired Burgess and Liple, they were running South Charleston's plant. They had figured it out. But that's where the original design came for some of the improvements for the East High Water Plant. Mr. Thompson has run one of those facilities. He came in with his crew and said, hey, wait a minute, maybe we can figure this out another way. And so he was, he'd been working on it, Russ, I don't know, six months now, non-stop. And we got to the point where we hired, uh, the, the, um, developer of the system. They, they're out of Minnesota, this Wigan company. They had to fly a representative in, spend a week with us, okay? That wasn't inexpensive. Then our computerized, uh, company had to send a representative in. So Mid-Ohio, the water department, I don't take anything away from Brian or everybody else, everybody had a hand in this to get to the point where we're at. We are very, very close to having that plant up and operational. If we can get the Ohio EPA out, and they can approve the byproducts that we have, and approve the plant, that could be up and running by end of year, so that we all have our fingers crossed that that, that is going to be there. So, and that's only with the assistance of, of Mid-Ohio. Let me go back to Councilman Eads.
Thank you. Well, that just brings up a question that if this had been set and we had proved the money because it was going to be re-engineered or reworked, and then Mr. Russell comes in, or Russ comes in, or, and, um, says, wait, we, we don't have to do that, what's our cost savings at that point compared to what we've laid out?
So, so the repairs at the West High Plant that we put on hold right now, that amount of money, we, we put on hold, Greg, but we do have a plan to alter that plan and use those funds. Same thing, same thing with, same thing with East High Plant, okay? Remember, the majority of those dollars, one point six million, is for that new well development. We still need a new well at that plant. We hope to generate a million gallons a day out of that plant, once this is said and done. A million gallons. Those two, those two wells that we have right now won't produce a million gallons, okay? Everybody needs water. We need water. Water is scarce in the county. So one point six is for that. The other four hundred is for plant modifications. We feel that we still may need those, okay? If we don't use them, then yes, we, we won't have to borrow funds, and we can back off on the increases that, that we were looking at. The, the eighteen million dollars minus whatever we don't use, those projects are still going to be completed, all right? The, 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 the Main Street Water Replacement, okay, begins next month. The Truck Sewer Project begins in March or April. All of those projects are still go full steam ahead, okay? So if we enter into a, an agreement with Mid-Ohio, whatever increases we had to pay for those now are absorbed by the region, Mid-Ohio, our partner, and we're looking more at a pricing structure like you see right here with those savings added in, okay? So ultimately, that will be add, passed back on to the end user, the consumer, okay?
Steve. So the, the rates increase that we agreed upon, or those rates will still go up, up until?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-five?
Yes. They'll go up, on up through two thousand twenty-four. Two thousand twenty-five is when the new pricing starts.
Right, yeah, that's when, yeah.
So, so the third and final increase, Josh, that you're talking about, will not, it will not happen?
Gotcha.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, yeah, excellent question. And I, I just want to make one final comment, you know, um, the, 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 Main Street Water Line Replacement, thirty-seven hundred feet, okay? So what that is, is from Garfield to the bowling alley, okay? Not that far, not that far. One point two million dollars. One point two million dollars. We've got hundreds of miles, if not thousands of miles, of pipe underneath your feet here. That, that's anywhere from a hundred and fifty to fifty years old. Can you imagine? I mean, eventually, that will have to be addressed. And we, we've seen it, you know? To, to partner with a much larger, you know, organization that can help us, you know, with our growth and, and help us with some of those, uh, costs, i- is, is a breath of fresh air, okay? Uh, I'll touch briefly on the contract. I know you've all had a chance to read it. Basically, what it states is, uh, beginning, if adopted, beginning January one, Mid-Ohio would take over our, the management of our, of our utilities. They're already managing, we're paying them to manage the, um, the water. Now, they would take over the wastewater, okay? The twelve-month transition period is designed so that we have time to transfer debt, customers, employees, uh, you know, assets, what have you. It's a, it's a twelve-month transition period, and they even have an extra six months in there to, to fully effect transfer, okay? So nothing happens day one, other than Mid-Ohio gets more ingrained in the city. But I tell you what, they're already ingrained in the city. Uh, you know, they're, they're not going anywhere. And guess what? I don't think we've received an invoice one for them managing our water department, to be honest with you. I don't think we've paid invoice one. Uh, that's just, that's, that's just the, the partnership that we have. I'll, I'll remind you once again, the county, now Mid-Ohio, is putting in the reciprocal line down from the prison to meet our Main Street Water Line there at the bowling alley at their cost, you know? So one point two million dollars on Mid-Ohio now doing that for us. I, I, it's just an incredible partnership. And that's, and that's along with the interconnect that they put on State Route Thirty-eight last year, which we've already used several times this year. You know, it's, it's just been a wonderful partnership, and, you know, I can't thank them enough. So, oh, Mr. Slane, exit, oh, Rob, yeah. I, I, well, I can't, I can't thank our partnership enough, you know? Many years ago, we didn't have such a solid partnership. So, thank you. But anyhow, there's a full twelve months, or eighteen months if needed, to transfer. Let me address the five hundred thousand, okay? Because that, I don't want that to be misconstrued. Mid-Ohio is saying that, okay, if you elect after the third reading to, uh, allow us to enter into this contract, great. They are in the process of engineering the wastewater treatment plant. And it's costing, what is it, a couple million dollars? It is a couple million dollar engineering expense, okay? If June, July, November, December of two thousand twenty-four, and they've spent a million and a half dollars in, on this engineering, and we decide, uh, we made a mistake, we don't want to do this, it's at an incredible loss to Mid-Ohio. Part of the reason why is because we enter into this agreement, then we continue to process wastewater for the prison, okay? That's a million two, a million two in revenue. That's half our wastewater treatment budget, half of it. Which if we don't enter into this agreement, it's gone. It's gone in three years, okay? That, that revenue will be gone. But if we don't enter into it, they need to start engineering, transferring that up to their new treatment facility, okay? And that would be much more than five hundred thousand dollars, but that's where they set this, five hundred thousand. So that is the reason that's there, so we don't change our minds eight, ten, twelve months down the road, okay? And at, at a considerable amount of cost to them. Okay? Is that, is that clear? Should be.
Well, I do have one thing to add to that.
Sir.
You know, because I wasn't in that meeting, but I heard about the five hundred thousand dollars. If we did decide to back out of that contract, and I know when you sign a contract, you, you have an agreement. And there usually are penalties if you back out of a contract. And one of the things about the five hundred thousand that I was surprised about, because, you know, I knew some of the work that was being done, I heard about it and, and, and read it, I thought it was too low. I said, five hundred thousand, that's it? That, you know, if something happens, only five hundred thousand dollars?
Mr. President, um, I agree.
I'm not telling them to increase it, but, you know, that's, it's an agreement.
So, Mr. President, again, uh, that is because of the relationship that we have. Yeah, the, the number was a million, a million five, that was the number. But they said that, no, we're not here to scare anybody. It, it, it's not meant to be a scare tactic. It's meant to be, hey, this is going to really be our punitive damages if, if, you know, we get eleven months down the road. Because that engineering, and I'm telling you, we, we pay hefty fees with what we're doing with our own projects here. But imagine a hundred million dollar, you know, wastewater treatment facility that now has to be expanded to bring on the flow of the prison, plus piping it up there, you know? It's, it, five hundred thousand, you're absolutely right. It is, it's a bargain for us.
Yeah, I think that's generous, and I think if we had possibly, uh, looked at going into contract maybe with another company, uh, someone who wasn't, uh, as invested in our city as the county is, then they may have charged even more than that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, uh, that, that is the retainer, uh, for the agreement. As stated, all employees will transfer at their rate of pay, their position. You know, and, and they're looking forward to treating our employees better than we're treating them now. And, and, and I don't want to disparage anybody, but, um, they have a philosophy to train and cross-train and develop employees. Because of our structure, I, we can't develop anybody. I can't meet one-on-one with anybody and help develop them, you know? We're, we're just, we, we, we're not structured like that. We can't do that. But Mid-Ohio can, and they will. And that's, that's part of the reason that they're so efficient, okay? So it's a benefit to, to our employees. I don't know if there's any other nuances in the, the, the contract. I mean, it is quite lengthy, but I'll, I'll entertain any questions. Uh, Councilman Eads, I'm sure you have one more in you.
Oh, I have quite a few more, but, but I'll, if anybody else, I don't want to...
Now, in this, uh, district, we would be allowed a total of two board members to be on the, to be on the board, and then an additional third one.
Do you want me to address that? Okay, all right. So here's, here's the big difference with signing up with somebody like Aqua or, or another regional, okay? Um, wi- with Aqua, and we vetted that. I know we've had lots of questions about that, but we vetted them. We had somebody who spent ten years with Aqua, you know, who pretty basically said, hey, you're relinquishing all control of everything, and you, you're, you're losing anything that you had, okay? So in a partnership, and we consider this a partnership, I mean, that's all we've talked about here, it's, it's a partnership. Okay, yeah, we're, we're throwing our, you know, toys into this, you know, this, this machine, if you will, all right? But we get representation. By contract, we get two board members, okay? Plain City gets two board members, County gets two board members, if, um, you know, West Jeff comes on, they get two board members, you know, every, every municipality, okay? Well, we thought, okay, London's twice the size of the region right now. So we, we're a bigger player, you know? We, 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 we would like at least equal, if not maybe a slight advantage as far as representation goes, okay? And so, um, after much conversation, we petitioned the commissioner, okay, who has two appointees. And after a lengthy discussion, it was decided that, well, okay. They have two appointees. They will grant one of their selections of, of, um, trustees to the municipality that has the most end users. Right now, that's London, and probably for the next six years, probably London. I'd look, uh, Plain City may quickly surpass that, uh, you know, who, who knows? But, you know, London's got twelve hundred doors that, you know, we, we expect in, in three years as well, you know? So, uh, we thought, and the commissioners thought, Rob thought, okay, that, that's, the, that's the best way to handle this, okay? That the municipality that has the most end users and has the most to, to input should have, you know, a, a slight advantage with representation. So at this particular time, that's London. So we, we would have the county's choice, and then we'd have, and how this is structured is the mayor would offer a, a couple of appointments, council would ratify, okay?
So then, our BPU board, when would that dissolve?
The, the current plan, Josh, is to allow the BPU, the existing BPU board to function throughout two thousand twenty-four during the transition period. to function throughout two thousand twenty-four during the transition period. Uh, that, that may or may not be, well, I can tell you right now, something's going to have to, to, to stay in place because, um, you know, we, we, we've got the trunk sewer project and we've got, you know, these, these things need to be overseen. And so, I just don't want to just throw them to the wayside. I mean, you know, as a matter of fact, because I'm personally, you know, involved with those, I want to make sure that they, they come to fruition. So, the, the discussion has been to keep the current BPU board in until the transfer of assets.
So, I was looking at the, the three-year commencement of rates. Um, we've got the sheet in front of us of rates through two thousand thirty-two. But on the contract, it says after three years, rates may increase. Um, is there any evidence or any, anyone that has been part of this for three years and seen the rates increase and what percentage may increase? Because, of course, we can see numbers for decades, but it's...
Yeah. So, so Brian, um, this was, this was a request by administration while we were talking about this agreement here. Administration thought that, hey, guys, you know, maybe, maybe you could sweeten this a little bit and, and guarantee you'll keep rates the same, or you won't increase rates for a period of time. So, Mid-Ohio went back to their attorney, who drew this draft, did this up, and said, okay, do you feel confident enough with your pro forma that, you know, rates won't increase? And the answer was yes, from Mr. Taylor. So, he said, okay, let's, let's go ahead and we'll put that in there. That we don't intend to increase rates above where they're currently at for thirty-six months unless there's some catastrophic event happen. That, that language wasn't even in there. That was a request from, uh, the current administration, okay? Which they complied with.
I'm, what I was really asking was, what the, the rate's going to be, they're, they're going to be the same for the next three years per this contract. But has anyone been part of it and seen after whatever it is, the increase on those rates from the base to what needs to be charged from Mid-Ohio?
The, the rates should actually go down, Brian. The rates should go down according to that pro forma, okay? Here's all I can tell you, and, and, uh, Mr. Slane can attest to that. We, uh, Tom Taylor, who appeared in front of finance, and unfortunately, he wasn't here tonight because he had hip surgery. Um, but he'll be here next meeting. Tom has forty years in the business. He's, he went through the Pickerington explosion. Uh, he's been through regionalization before, he's ran the county for, I, I don't know, ten, I don't know how many years. Uh, but, but Mr. Taylor, uh, I have all the respect in the world for him. He is incredibly intelligent and, you know, he spent, I, I don't know how many hours on this pro forma. And, and it is almost spot on. We, we've worked the math and reworked the math. So, nobody can tell what's going to happen, okay? Nobody's, nobody can tell if you've got a five million dollar repair that, that has to come out of nowhere, okay? But assuming that that doesn't happen, it's just normal operations, I trust those numbers. Trust them more than, than I trust, you know, uh, most.
Although that part says rates may be increased in accordance with the percentage increase of the Consumer Price Index?
Uh, that's, that's legal speak, Greg. Uh, that's, that's all I can tell you. They, they're trying to do everything they can to keep rates according to the pro forma, okay?
Okay.
What's, um, I know concerns in the past about privatizing is, one of the concerns is if expansion or repair work has to be done, is that determined by the board? Does the City of London have any say-so other than the three representatives that would be on the board? Or council doesn't have any say in that?
Well, uh, that is a board decision, okay? Be a Mid-Ohio decision. But, you know, that's where strength of, of your board complement comes into play, okay? Not that, you know, uh, London would go in with, with flexed muscles, okay? Because, uh, the board has a lot of complex issues to deal with. Plain City is a monster, and I'm sure Brad can tell you, it's just, you know, I, they've created a, a hole that they're trying to climb out of, you know? And so, the board and the county, everybody's working on that. But, you know, we, we, we do understand that, well, okay. And, and, and the board understands, and the county understands, okay? London's a big player, and, and, you know, we're the county seat, and we've got a lot of growth that's happening now. And so, the advantage that I'm going to say versus selling it to, to an Aqua versus in a partnership with Mid-Ohio, we, we, our, our needs locally will be heard and, and dealt with, okay?
That would, that would be the...
And I can, I, I'm just getting nods from these two right here.
That would be the same case for, like, any kind of repair work that would maybe, need to be done throughout the city? Or, I know right now Band-Aid work is kind of being done, and some of that eighteen million, I think, was to address infrastructure issues.
Yeah, infrastructure repair, yeah, absolutely. Uh, yeah, that, that is on everybody's radar, absolutely on everybody's radar. So, you know, emergency repairs will be dealt with immediately in a much more efficient and effective way than we're dealing with them now, you know? Poor, poor Bill won't have to be woken out of bed at three o'clock in the morning, come over and try to fix a water main break, you know? This, it, it, it will be a much more efficient operation.
But that would be a determination by the board also, right? Whether to do those, or, do the infrastructure repair work that needs done as well?
Uh, yes, sir. The only thing I can say, Andy, is if, if there's infrastructure repair, if there's ten miles of infrastructure repair right now, the BPU board is going to say, how do we do it? Where's the money coming from, you know? The, the, we, we, we lost half of our prison budget earlier in the year because of inmate, you know, population was down. So, hence, we had to come to council to borrow money for that sludge press, you know, which we were supposed to fund ourself. Well, when we don't get the revenue, what, what do you do, right? So, I'd much rather rely on a large body of water that, uh, you know, can support a lot of ships to come in and, and help us out more so than we could do ourself.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, very much so, that would be a board decision. But ultimately, like any good board, rely on the experts that you hire. So, obviously, people like Russ, coming from the county, people like your staff, they would be advising the board, and ultimately, your representatives, not unlike what the BPU does currently, and ensure that, you know, work is getting done regardless of the location. It, it doesn't behoove us as a board to prioritize the county or Plain City or vice versa. Like, that just isn't, that isn't how this works. Plus, I just want to be abundantly clear, more to the public, as I, I know you guys understand this, but to the public, you know, that this is not a private organization by any stretch of the imagination. This, this is, this is considered a local government, uh, type of unit. It's a, like I said, it's a board that you appoint to, its meetings are open to the public, operates in a very similar manner. We can only go in the executive sessions for very similar things that you can go into. Um, so, you know, if there were any concerns down the road, and we, we've had public at our meetings obviously bringing those concerns that we discussed earlier, and once again, we listen to those concerns. So, the public is allowed to attend. We have time set aside in our meetings that if Rob comes and wants to speak to us, then that, that's a set aside time. Haley, the village administrator for Plain City, also has that. I would assume we would obviously have that same courtesy passed on to, uh, uh, City of London. If anyone, how you want to handle that, whereas the president, council, or mayor, so forth. But, uh, no, this is a very open board, we're very open having conversations. But ultimately, in the end, while yes, it may be a board decision, I can emphasize it now, uh, we rely on the experts. And once again, the experts that would come from you, the City of London.
Yes, Mr. Robinson.
So, if we come into this agreement, can we rule out the buyer's property becoming a sewer plant?
Already ruled out. It's already, is that, is that, is that in stone?
Yes.
Okay. So, so the, and this, this only came after, you know, a, a lot of lobbying. But the new facility is being constructed to the north of seventy on county property, right, well, it's, it's Mid-Ohio property now. So, it would be tucked off the road. I mean, and nobody wants to talk about another, you know, plant, if you will, especially wastewater. But it, it, it'll be tucked off the road and it's a great location, so. Quick, um, Councilman, can I ask, uh, for your indulgence? I, we've got two very, very important employees here, Brian and Carol, who, who, you know, took their own time here, as well as everybody else, but, uh, to, to just say a word or two. Can we entertain if they want to speak?
Oh, yeah, they can come up, no problem at all.
Carol, you don't have to. Brian, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know it's been a long evening so far. Brian, keep it so much short, thank you.
I'll be real short, I promise. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking as a citizen of London and an employee.
Brian, pick that mic up, will you?
Yeah, I'll speak, uh, as a citizen and as an employee. For one, shameless on us for ever being in this position, okay? Um, not anyone's own in particular fault, but our infrastructure is terrible. Our training of employees, absolutely terrible. No oversight's been do it, done to it whatsoever. I think the ones that got this Mid-Ohio thing even considered to bring to you guys, I considered selling my house and moving out of London. I grew up in London, went to London High School. But I worked here, and I, I don't want to say a whole lot, you know, but, but my real question is, one that you need to consider, is if you don't go to Mid-Ohio, which they've already shown you, you had an East High Plant that sat out there for twelve years, and you didn't have that much water to look at. They showed you in a very short time that much water to look at, and there's more behind it. The people are highly trained, highly educated, um, very friendly and courteous, professional, and great to work with. I've only worked with them since the twenty-third of last month. I've seen things at the Old West High Plant dramatically change. Hardness of water that we drink every day was two forty-four, and that was okay. It's been one thirty, which is a lot lower, one thirty consistently in a short period of time. The workforce that we had, and we lost employees, we had nine, we're down to two. Two. The workforce that we had thought they was educated on the treatment of water. Mid-Ohio has opened our eyes. We weren't educated on the treatment of water for the citizens of London and to give them what they deserve. They're taxpayers, they deserve it. My question is, if you guys don't take Mid-Ohio, you better have a good backup plan quick, because we're already past the eleventh hour of this. Um, I've been out on repairs, on mains. You fix it two feet away, it breaks again. You know, uh, we've had factories on West First Street, Armalay. Have to spend, send their staff home, and we're trying to grow London. It don't take long for that to, to transpire and get around. So, thank you to the Board of Public Utilities, thank you to council. I'm behind it a hundred percent and can't see where we'd go wrong.
Brian?
Thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
How long have you worked for the board for?
Three years.
Three years.
Yes.
Now, your short amount of time dealing with Mid-Ohio, what have you learned in that short amount of time compared to the time before that, you think?
Because of leadership style, not good or bad, everything was kept to one or two employees, all knowledge, that's it. They didn't let it out. When people wanted to get lab certified, when people wanted to, uh, get backflow preventer training, it was always like, nope, we'll take care of it, we'll take care of it. Those people that took care of it, for one, didn't take care of it in the correct manner, and two, never trained anyone else on anything. So, I'm a very upfront, honest person. I told Mid-Ohio, if it costs me my job, I would still sign as a citizen of London to bring Mid-Ohio in here, and I'll go somewhere else and try to work. They know what they're doing, I trust them. You know how much of an inconvenience it was today for the internet to be down? That's not life or death in most situations. But when you kick on that faucet, you better know what you're drinking. I trust them, I, I back them a hundred percent. I don't know the gentleman, you know, Rob, I don't know you. Thank you very much for, for giving London this chance.
Mr. Sollers, if I may?
Yes.
If, if you don't mind me sharing this little bit.
Uh-huh.
So, he came to the office today to share these exact sentiments with me, that he felt that the professionalism and the troubleshooting of Mid-Ohio was far and above and beyond what he would have expected, and he'd learned more in this short time than he had in any time before that. Um, and I, and I appreciate you telling me those things today because, and you've told council the same thing, and I'm glad you did that, because as an employee, I think there's weight to that, that you're seeing that.
Okay, thank you. And if you guys have any questions, get ahold of me. You know, be more than glad to talk to you. We've got a problem, I think we're really close to an awesome fix. It was, it's in your guys' hands.
And what, and excuse me, so, what's your name again, Russ?
Brian.
Brian? Brian, uh, thank, you know, thanks for, you know, bringing this to us, because these are things that we need to know. And, uh, like you said, yeah, this is the point we're at now, but it took a long time to get to this point.
Absolutely.
And I think that it would have been really good to know a lot of these things before, you know? You're not blaming any type of, uh, leadership or anything, but, you know, different leadership styles maybe, uh, don't work here well.
Right.
You know, because if we're going down to two employees, we had nine, oftentimes, people aren't leaving the job, they're leaving the boss. That's who they're leaving, they're not leaving the job. So, it's, it's, you know, I think that this is, you know, some things that we should have, should have known in the, in the past that could have possibly helped to, uh, get a better position now. And I would hope that just because you're speaking up, that all of a sudden, you're not, uh, sweeping, sweeping floors and emptying trash. I would hope not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Eads, thank you for that compliment. Okay.
Was, did, did Carol want to speak?
Carol, do you have anything?
Carol, Carol waved me off.
Okay, you have anything?
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your hard work, though. Yeah. Thank you.
So, I, so I'd like to roll all the way back to your opening statement when you first stood up today, that we have a responsibility to the people of London. My concern is, is this the best deal? Is there other things that we could look at? Uh, maybe it's short-term, maybe it's long-term, I don't know. Um, short-term, when we're talking about the rates, you know, we just imposed rate increases three consecutive time in a year and a half period. So, July, we just took one, we're going to take one in January, we would have taken one in January of twenty-five. You know, are we willing to roll the rate back, rates back?
Keep in mind, Greg...
On January of twenty-four?
Keep in mind, Greg, those rates, if they went up, they're not going to fix anything, they're Band-Aids. We've got bigger problems than that little bit of, uh, rate increase could have ever fixed, ever.
I understand.
Mid-Ohio's going to come in and they're going to do, if we, uh, raised our rates to the point that, of the work that Mid-Ohio's going to do for us, do you know what those rates would look like then? To actually attack the infrastructure the way it needs to? Do you have any idea what those numbers would look like? It wouldn't look anything like the little numbers that we proposed, because the small numbers we proposed wasn't really going to handle anything, except for some of the new things, and it would hardly, uh, address any of the old infrastructure or things that need fixed. I think that Mid-Ohio being in this, uh, and they're such a good partner, because they're, it's kind of like you shop local. You know the people, you work with the people, and they actually care, and they're invested in what you're going to do.
No, I, I, Mr. President, I agree that if we put plans in place to fix everything that needs to be fixed, it would, our rates would be a lot more, um, with the exception of creating a new, uh, east side trunk, which wasn't already in place, and that's the majority of the money that we approved. I mean, that is new, although it's supposed to be fixing a problem. However, let me ask a couple more questions. You mentioned earlier that, um, starting January one, that Mid-Ohio would actually take over the management also of our sanitary sewer?
Correct.
Is there going to be an additional fee for that, or is that under the hundred thousand dollars we've already approved? already approved?
Uh, there is no fee structure worked out for that at all, and we still have an acting superintendent with wastewater, so to have boots on the ground, uh, during the day is not what, uh, that means, Greg, it means that they'll oversee and Rick will report to them.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm, I mean, management, active management, I, no one's saying that Rick's done anything wrong, but you've, you've got another level that's helping out there, I understand that. Um, also, sanitation's not involved in this.
No.
Okay, but in this document you gave us, there's $1.8 million of assets listed for sanitation, should that not be in this document?
Well, the listing is for the entire Board of Public Utilities, that will have to be broken out. We don't have a, a plan for that right at the moment, Greg, other than for, um, sanitation to fall under the street department again.
Okay.
So, so to answer your question, yeah, that will be taken out, absolutely.
That, that shouldn't be part of this document at all, because it's not...
It should be denoted that that belongs to sanitation, yes.
Okay, and then my, my biggest heartburn about this whole thing, let me, let me say, I don't know that this is a bad deal, I don't know that it's a, a good deal, I, I tend to believe it's a good deal, I, I, overall, um, the heartburn that I have is that the city council is going to be required to put $500,000 into an escrow before the end of the year, when this legislation, if it goes through readings and has to go 30 days beyond that point, won't be effective officially until mid-January. I, I understand why they would want to do this, although I reject the, uh, the argument that we have to pay for their engineering unless they've already engineered things for us that we don't know about. So, I understand moving forward, if we join the agreement, and they're going to do some engineering at that point, that there is a cost to them. At this point, I don't know that there's an actual cost to them.
Okay, you, you understand the spirit of my explanation for why that is required, right? So, if we get into, you know, June, July, August, November, December, and we decide we're gonna pull out, they've expended a tremendous amount of money based on us joining the region. That's why that is there. If, if, if it's January 15th, and they haven't really got that far into the engineering process, then I'm sure that that is, that's not an, an issue. But it's the spirit, that if they suffer an engineering cost or monetary loss because of us backing out of an agreement, as Mr. President said, it, you know, in good faith, in good faith, we need to make sure that they're, they're held harmless.
In June, July, and August, I fully understand that. In the, in the spirit of collaboration, why, it makes me question why they want us to open, put money into an account prior to the end of the year, prior to this taking effect. That's my heartburn, that's the issue that I have.
Well, I have some antacid for you. I think that what, uh, like I said, that's, what that's gonna do is it's gonna get our buy-in to it. It's gonna see how, how much we really wanna be in this. It's a buy-in, period. You often have it with contracts, you have it, even you go to the auto parts store, you take a part back, you have a restocking fee, there's a penalty for it. This is a contract worth millions of dollars, they are agreeing to take on all of our assets, all of our debt, everything, take it over, make it better than we could ever make it. And like I said, and I'll say it again, is I think that the $500,000 is too small, and it should even be larger than that for all of the hard work and the knowledge and experience that they're going to bring to the City of London.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I, I appreciate you being in my corner, I, I wish you were down here giving this presentation. Uh, Mr. Eads, I, I appreciate your concerns, but, uh, here, here's my hope, is that you will see that, that we really, first of all, we have no choice, but second of all, as Mr. Sawyer said, this is a good deal for us, it's a great deal for us, it solves a huge problem, a huge problem, and it sets ourself up to concentrate on, you know, administration of government and to fix roads and, and, you know, to, to get our, get ourselves out of the utility business. It's a no-win situation, it's a no-win situation. So, the half million dollars doesn't bother me a bit, because I want you to adopt this, uh, I, I want to have it approved by end of year, whether that has to be an emergency piece of legislation or what have you, and I want January 1 for this to take effect. That's my goal.
All right. Any other questions on, uh, 22823? And we do thank everyone for all of their comments and coming to council tonight and waiting until we got to...
No, 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 thank, thank you, thank you, and, and, and great questions, and there's probably more questions to come, that's okay, we, we've got the answers, okay?
All right.
And, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Anything further from council on 22823? All right, one, two, 22923, a motion to read by title or number?
Sure moved.
Second.
All right, first and second. Uh, Resolution 22923, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution assessing the cost of the demolition of a building.
Yeah, let me get to it.
Okay.
38 Mount Street.
21th.
It felt like it, should've been.
Okay, this is for the demolition of, uh, the house that was on 138 Mount Street for the amount of, uh, $21,750.
Now, are those funds?
After, this is from a fire, uh, so we are, uh, authorizing the city to, uh, recover the total cost of this.
All right.
We've already paid for it.
Yeah, we've already paid for it, we're just going after the owner.
Okay. Any, uh, discussion on this resolution? All right, what are our wishes here?
I'll move that we suspend this one.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a first and a second for suspension, uh, take a roll call for suspension, Mr. Eads?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Stahl?
Yes, move it to adoption.
All right, first and second for adoption, uh, Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Thank you. On to Ordinance 23023, a motion to read by title or number?
Sure moved.
Second.
All right, first and second. Uh, Ordinance 23023, sponsored by Josh Peters, and ordinance amending Ordinance 20322 to reflect a range of salaries of department heads and non-union personnel.
Yeah, this is just to, uh, pretty much give department heads and non-union personnel a raise, um, to coincide with, uh, the union workers that we, here in the city.
And that's what we've done in the past, correct?
Yeah, we do this every year.
Correct. All right, any, uh, discussion on 23023?
What percentage was that? Do you know?
Three.
Three percent.
And that's like the normal increase of cost of living? All right. What are our wishes here? Want to leave that on, or?
We'll leave it on.
We can leave it on?
This just has to pass before the first, correct?
Okay, we'll leave that on. Next, on to Ordinance 23123, a motion to read by title or number?
Sure moved.
Second.
All right, so first and second. Uh, Ordinance 23123, sponsored by Greg Eads, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of London, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Well, I put the auditor through her paces, and we went through this kind of line by line with some questions I had, I was satisfied with her answers, uh, this was her, uh, setting the budget for the next year based on the information that she had. One of the questions that I brought up was that she had indicated a couple months ago that the, um, health insurance might go up by 1% or less, when in fact it came down by 6%. So, actually, you know, there's gonna be some wiggle room because of that, she did not adjust the numbers just in case, but, um, it's actually the same as it was last year for that. Um, a few things, and I want to bring this up, and we're gonna talk about part of this in a minute, um, the big thing that, that came forward was with the Fire Department levy failing, and we know the Fire Department's going to be short next year, no ifs, ands, or buts, they're, they're going to go through, um, I believe go through their carryover, or come very close to it. We wanted to make su- I wanted to make sure that the Fire Department was gonna be funded. Um, we were given a plan of action by the Safety Service Director, if you've not seen that, if you weren't at the meeting, I'm gonna read this very, just kinda break this down. Effective January 1st, they're gonna reduce their la- their staffing levels from 10 per shift to nine. They've been carrying nine, a lot of times they were at the point that they were doing 10. Um, when you talk to the Fire Chief, it says, well, we've saved one physician, and it's gonna save $200,000 a year. That's not a true number, because it's one position, position per shift, there's three shifts. So, we're actually cutting three, basically the salary of three people, part-time people out, uh, to save the $200,000, that's gonna help close the gap. Uh, we are going to see here in a minute that we're putting back, or we're gonna request to put this back on the ballot for an income tax increase of .25%, that's step two of this. Step three was actually within step two, and council to supplement fund as necessary, and then it said 100 to $500,000 if the levy fails in parentheses for 2024. Um, there was a long discussion about funding the Fire Department and making sure it's funded. So, after a discussion, the number that was settled upon for the time being was $200,000 that we're going to go ahead and I believe supplement that fund by $200,000 now, and there's gonna be a transfer for $200,000, that should get us through the election cycle. Even if the election, even if this passes in the election cycle, then there's gonna be a period of time where it can't be collected, so we're gonna have to still help fund the Fire Department at that point. This does have to be, um, to the Board of Elections, uh, by December 10th, that'll come up later. However, the most important part to me was that we kept this department staffed and running in its current locations. The fourth step of this plan was if the levy fails to reduce staffing levels from 9 to 7 and close the South Station, saving $300,000 annually, I am dead set against that. Um, we, we provided the service now at this point to take that back away and leave basically the entire Third Ward and parts of the Fourth Ward unprotected, um, I think is unacceptable. However, we did agree on the $200,000, that's in the budget. So, we do have the budget before us, it's just broke down, as you gentlemen see, it's just broke down for personal services, which is their, um, their, um, employees' expense and their operations' expense, and I can't remember what the total number was, maybe Ken can advise, was there, what was the total difference, do you remember, percentage-wise?
Uh, before we did the $200,000, it was less than 2 perc- it was a decrease for general, and it still is.
Okay.
And then the overall, it went up like 500,000, something changed. Let me see if I have, I don't know if I recalculated that.
So, a slight decrease for the general fund from last year, and then overall, it's pretty flat overall, really.
It's pretty flat.
Yeah, okay.
The majority of it is the BCU department.
So, we just have to do this by the end of the year, there's emergency clause on it, just so it goes into effect later, um, by, after the third meeting. And my suggestion is, since the general public hasn't had a chance to hear about this or see, I would suggest we leave this on until a later reading.
And I just also want to, uh, remind everyone that these discussions can be had in our count, in our committee meetings, that's where we get into really deep discussion on any piece of legislation here, so by the time it does come to city council here, it's already been discussed in, uh, a committee meeting, where it's, you know, more specific things that you usually get into, rather than getting into, uh, you know, larger discussions and details of information in, in this actual city council meetings. Uh, we've done a really good job of keeping those things through our committees, so by the time they come here, they're more streamlined, and we have a lot more facts, uh, because we've already discussed those in our count, in our committee meetings. So, our wishes are, uh, what are our wishes here to keep this one on?
Yep.
All right. Now, we're moving on to Ordinance, uh, 23223, a motion to read by title or number?
Sure moved.
Second.
All right, first and second. Uh, Ordinance 23223, sponsored by Josh Peters, an ordinance to approve a temporary increase to the municipal income tax by 25/100 of 1% per annum for a set period of time of seven years commencing July 1st, 2024, of which increase one quarter of 1% per annum should, shall be used for the purposes of providing funds to pay costs in acquiring, constructing, furnishing, equipping, improving, maintaining, and repairing municipal fire department facilities to pay general operating expenses of the Fire Department and to pay any expenses and debts, service charges for debt incurred in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, as Greg stated, um, we will be, uh, putting this, I'd like to put this back on the ballot, um, so we can fund the Fire Department, um, it is .25% increase to the, uh, income tax.
And my question is, uh, because this was just now on the ballot again, and it, um, it did not pass, but did it fail by even more this time than it did before?
Yes.
So, it's like, it's losing traction and losing interest?
I would like to interject a little thing that I saw on the news. Um, it was basically said issue with the, running of issue two, issue one and two on the ballot, it caused a major storm on a lot of things, and I think that's one of the things it caused a major storm on. You brought out a lot of people that normally don't vote, and probably wouldn't have voted, so that's why they didn't the last time it was out, and they either didn't vote for it at all, leaving it blank, and there were some undervotes on this, but then they were not even in or voting.
So, then it seems as, as if you're saying there were more people that came out to vote this time, but since there were more people that came out to vote, now we know that there's even more people who are not in favor of it.
One, one additional piece of information, Mr. President, this is, as last time set for a period of seven years, so it would expire and have to be renewed.
And we want to leave this on?
When's the?
What's the deadline that they would?
I got it.
In order to meet the deadline?
December 10th.
Okay. Has to be filed by what?
December 10th.
I'll make a motion to suspend three reading rule, we've already had it on four times.
Second.
First and second to suspend the three reading rule, uh, we'll take a roll call for suspension, Mr. Eads?
No.
All right, and Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
All right, does not pass. On to Resolution, uh, you need five.
Sure moved.
Yeah, we need five, we don't have five. Yeah, you need five to suspend, we don't have it. All right, on to, uh, Resolution, uh, 23323, a motion to read by title or number?
Sure moved.
All right. So, we have a first to read by title?
Second.
And a second. All right, Resolution 23323, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution to place the issue of a temporary increase to the municipal income tax by 25/100 of 1% per annum for a set period of time of seven years as provided in Ordinance 23223 on the ballot at the election to be held on March 19th, 2024, and directing the Board of Elections of Madison County, Ohio to conduct such elections and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, this is, uh, if we pass the above, Ordinance 232-23, this is to be put on the ballot.
So, leave this on as well?
Yep.
All right. On to roundtable, we'll begin with, uh, Mr. Stahl.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, been a very interesting meeting, a lot of new things, a lot of good things happening, new housing, next year's gonna be a very exciting year. Like to extend the welcome to the newly elected people that's showing up to find out, it isn't always this long, but very exciting, and also like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. But very exciting, and also like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Hitt?
The next safety committee meeting is December twelfth at five P M. in here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Eads?
Oh, I would also like to, uh, thank, there was a long meeting, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up and showed an interest. I would also like to specifically thank our three members that have been, our, our council members elect that are in the audience, Mr. Michael Norman, the third ward, Shannon Traynor, the fourth ward, and Brent McDaniel's, an at-large, uh, member-elect of the city council. Thanks for coming, hope you guys keep coming when you're not supposed to yet.
All right, Mr. Peters?
I want to thank everybody coming out, I know there's, uh, big decisions to make the next couple of meetings, but, uh, I know we'll make the right decision.
All right, and Mr. Robinson?
Two more meetings.
All right. Oh, my goodness. I'd like to thank everyone for, uh, coming out to our council meeting, and I am excited again for all of the growth that is coming to the City of London, and like I said before, this is just the beginning. This is, uh, this is the, the ground floor of what's going to happen in the future, so I'm glad to see it. And, you know, it is important, the number, one of the number one things you need for a, uh, a thriving civilization is clean water. That's one of the number one things you need above all, so, uh, just keep that in mind, please. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure moved.